It's 7 o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and start the meeting for our city council, meeting of June 3rd. Ification, Bobby Campbell, please.
Father God, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for how you continue to bless us and keep us. We thank you, God, for another day that we have not seen before. Father, we ask you to continue to be with us, and as this council prepares for the agenda that's set before them on today, Lord, we want to continue to pray for their wisdom, for their guidance. We, God, we ask you to continue to be with each one of them, Lord. We thank you for their service to our community. God, we ask you to bless each person that's present here this evening. Be with them, be with their families, continue to protect them and keep them. God, we always want to pray for and ask you to continue to bless our first responders. Be with them, watch over them. God, bless all of our city employees. Father God, be with them. We thank you, God, for blessing us with people who care about our city, who want us to have what's best, and make sure that we're protected, and getting the services that we need. God, also, we ask you to continue to watch out and to look out for the least, the last, and the lost. God, we pray for our homeless in our community, pray for those who don't have a place to stay, Father God. We continue, Lord, to ask you to be with them, Lord. And also, God, we ask you to help us to all work together, to try to be, work together as one. We ask it all in the name of Jesus the Christ, and we thank you, God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilperson Wise.
Present.
Councilperson Payne.
Present.
Councilperson Nichols.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Stodney.
Present.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record be flat. Eight councilmembers present, Councilperson Nolan absent.
All right, there's minutes to be approved, minutes from May 20th. Motion to approve. Second. We have a motion second to approve the minutes from May 20th. I need discussion or corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Approval of the agenda?
Submit.
We have a motion second to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Next up, claims to be approved.
Heather and Yvonne, they're out on training. So, we have a civil city claim of $751,329.30. We're on page one of 16, under contractual service under police, that handles a snow removal and shovel for the 1,110. I think I like to, since they're not here, approve the claims, contingent upon we checking that if that's mine, there's a misprint or typo, but I want to see if that claim was from last year. If it was remediation, I'll try and get a chance to come in and check it.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion. See you.
So, a motion second to approve the claims as submitted, with the understanding that that claim was not from last year, it's not due to last year. Any other questions or concerns regarding the claims? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
So, we have the Parks claim, American seems to be in order, so the claims are, I'm going to motion to approve them for $122,358.47.
Second.
There were motions second to approve the Parks claims. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next up, report of the clerk.
Sir, I'm having it at this time.
All right. First on the agenda for unfinished business is the public hearing for 2019 OR 19, an ordinance of additional appropriation. My understanding is that there's been no changes from the first or second reading.
With that, it's a public hearing.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against this additional appropriation for 2019 OR 19?
(Inaudible).
Anyone here to speak? Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and...
I'll make a motion to pass 2019 OR 19 in the third and final.
Second. We have a motion second to pass 2019 OR 19 in the third and final. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Passes with one retention. Next up is number 10, another additional appropriation, 2019 OR 21, passed in the first and second reading, and there's been no changes. This also is a public hearing. With that, we're going to go ahead and open this up to the public. It's a public hearing for 2019 OR 21. Anyone here to speak for or against regarding 2019 OR 21 additional appropriation? Seeing no one, we're going to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to pass 2019 OR 21 in the third and final.
Second. We have a motion second to pass 2019 OR 21 in the third and final reading. Any discussion, concerns, or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
One detention again. Next up, number 11. It's a public hearing for additional appropriation, 2019 OR 22. It's a public hearing for 2019 OR 22. Anyone here to speak for or against this additional appropriation? Seeing no one, we're going to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to pass 2019 OR 22 in the third and final, and just for Councilperson Ellis, this needs to put that floor in for the Park.
Second. We have a motion second to go ahead and pass 2019 OR 22 in the third and final reading. Any discussion, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? All right. Next up, new business. Matt Hall from Boyne, Southern Indiana.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to provide you all with an annual update on our economic development activities in Jeffersonville. You have a report in front of you. I promise not to read every word of it, but there are some highlights I would like to review with you, starting with page two, which is a highlight of our 2018 projects. These are projects that we announced in the calendar year 2018. You will see that we had four announcements in 2018 that represented 770 new jobs in Jeffersonville, representing an annual payroll, additional payroll of $30.9 million. So, again, that is an annual number, so that is not just a one-time hit. There's a capital investment represented by those four projects of $73.5 million in what we call taxable capital, so this is bricks and mortar and machinery and equipment that will go on the tax rolls. On page three, you will, that is a list of those four projects. They are all located within River Ridge, Bluegrass Supply Chain, Niagara Bottling, Hydra Trucking and Warehousing, and UCB. On page four, this is a cumulative look at the projects that we've announced since our organization was formed in July of 2006. And you will see, we've announced 168 projects since July of 2006, and if you look at the bar chart, the green bar chart at the bottom, you will see 87 of those 168 projects were announced in Jeffersonville. On page five, those projects represent 13,793 new jobs to our community, and you will see that 10,572 of those jobs are in Jeffersonville. Page six talks about that new annual payroll number in the cumulative sense, $511 million annually added to our payrolls here in Southern Indiana. And you will see that $379 million of that is in the city of Jeffersonville alone. Page seven, this is our overall capital investment on these 168 projects, and you will see we've reached $1.33 billion. And you will notice the chart below shows that almost a billion of that has happened within the city of Jeffersonville. And please stop me at any time, I'm going to, like I said...
Why would you want to stop me?
Can we throw a party when we hit the billion mark in Jeffersonville?
I do have a question. What percentage of those jobs in Jeffersonville are in River Ridge? The greatest percentage?
The greatest percentage of those are within River Ridge. That's correct. I don't have an exact number, but yes, the greatest percentage have happened in River Ridge. On page eight, we try to measure what the return on investment, your investment in economic development and for all of our investors, and we look at that in two ways. The first being that capital investment number that I mentioned, that $1.3 billion. It's a simple calculation. We take every dollar that has come into our organization for economic development purposes, not our membership monies, but the monies that are dog-eared for economic development, and we divide that by the number, that capital investment number. And you will see that for every dollar that has been given to us to provide economic development services, there's been a return of $192.36 in new taxable capital. On page nine, we take that same figure and divide it by that annual payroll number that I talked about, the $511 million, and that is a return of $73.37 annually. So, for every dollar that we've received, there's been a return of over $73 annually in new added payroll. Page 10 is sort of a current activity snapshot. We have about 23, what we call hot projects in our pipeline. I can tell you, we're really close to announcing a couple of those. They're really nice projects. We hope to announce all of them, but unfortunately, we can't win them all. I'm fortunate to work with a bunch of people who are very sore losers, so I promise you we will fight to win those projects. What's interesting is the green chart. I always like to include this because it shows that the majority of the interest in our community actually comes from, in terms of expansion or relocation projects, actually comes from outside Clark and Floyd counties. So, you will see, the biggest percentage of interest that we have comes from outside Clark and Floyd counties. Page 11 is just an overview of what we do in terms of new business attraction. Again, a lot of times, we go out and take our message to the world. We try to talk about Southern Indiana and where we are on the map, because a lot of folks don't know exactly where we are sometimes. And so, the customer's not always going to come to us. We do like to go to the customer. But we also do things like manage our property database, so companies can look at what kind of buildings we have, what kind of greenbelt sites we have, and the other things that are listed on that page. Page 12 is an overview of our domestic and international marketing. It is not an all-inclusive list, although it looks like it. The message being that we spend a lot of time on the road and hosting folks here to kind of show off our community and get them interested in our community. Page 13 is our business retention and expansion work. This is really probably the most critical work that we do, because if you compare that, when I talked about the most interest comes from outside of our areas, but the most, the majority of our announcements actually come from within Clark and Floyd counties. So, every time we have a business that expands, that's a victory in retention. So, it means they didn't leave here, they stayed here, and they chose to grow here. And, you know, I have been in places like Japan where we talk about the Edimitsu Lubricants plant that's in Jeffersonville, and they say, "Well, we're looking to expand our capacity." And I say, "Well, you need to do that in Jeffersonville." We did the same thing with some other foreign companies and got them to do that investment here. So, that work is critical to what we do. And I am going to shut up and let Wendy Danchester, our president and CEO, talk about our advocacy and our RDA.
So, Matt gets all of the meaty fun stuff, and I get to talk about stuff like advocacy, but we actually had a really good year. As you may know, one Southern Indiana does produce an advocacy agenda going into the General Assembly session every year, and this year, we were able to come back with some hits and wins on a couple of big ones. Probably one of the most significant ones was that the state of Indiana has now joined the Interstate Nursing License Your Compact. What does that mean? It means that a nurse that is licensed in one state that is a part of the compact can now practice in other states that are also part of the compact. Kentucky has been a member of the compact for years, so this is the second attempt we've had recently to have Indiana join that compact, and we did approve that. That with Norton now owning the majority of Clark, and Scott, and Baptist now owning Floyd, that is very important to ensuring that we can, that those hospital systems can deploy the nursing talent where they need it, so that we can get the services that we need. So, that was a big win for us. We also worked on, in conjunction with many others, in extending the urban enterprise zone for River Ridge Commerce Center. So, that was another big economic development tool in our toolbox that we wanted to make sure that we preserve moving forward. We are in the process of starting the 2020 legislative agenda, so if there's any issues or impacts that are important to you, please let us know that, and we can work those into the system now. It won't be approved until December. It will be disseminated to the members of the General Assembly after that. The next page, and I can go into any detail on that that you would like, but the next page is something you've heard me present on before, and that's the Indiana, what became, what started as the Indiana Regional Cities Initiative in 2015, is now the work that we're doing through the Our Southern Indiana Regional Development Authority. That authority was formed at the county levels, for five counties, Clark, Floyd, Washington, Scott, and Jefferson counties. Those directors are now, have been meeting monthly since January of 2018. We applied to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation and received a $150,000 planning grant to look at the plan that was funded by private sources in 2015 and upgrade it, give it a little bit more exposure. We rushed the process in 2015. We didn't intend to rush it, it just the deadline came upon us before we really had anything to work with. And now, we're going through the process of vetting that and including Jefferson County into that plan. I'm pleased to say that the IEDC has granted an extension for us to produce that report until the end of August. August 30th is our deadline on that, and we will definitely meet that deadline. Our original goal was to have that fulfilled by July 1st, and the reason was, we were hoping that through this last legislative session, the General Assembly would grant new dollars for the regional cities initiative. They did not. They did not put any new dollars into that program, so we're taking a couple of extra months to make sure we've got the right plan. Couple of the things that are important to that plan may not be as pertinent to the city of Jeffersonville, but it is important for the entire region. One is affordable, reliable broadband. That has come up very, very regularly as a need, not just in the most rural areas, but some of the, some of the outlying areas. Was up at Champion's Point the other day, and there are neighborhoods association up there that's having a hard time getting a grasp on what happens with broadband. Kids get off the school bus at 3:30 in the afternoon, and the speed of all the internet services drops because they all get on their devices. So, those are things that affect reliability, and of course, we need to find an affordable way to do that. Other issues that are coming up very, very clear in the regional development plan are things such as recreational amenities, those quality of place initiatives. We had Scott Martin from the River Heritage Conservancy come and make a presentation on the work that that group is doing to increase and accelerate, and maybe the better word is to enhance what is going on with the Ohio River Greenway in a way that's going to benefit all of our communities. Matt can continue to attract companies here, but the reality is, is that without the talent being located here or coming here, we're not going to be as successful on the attraction side of things. So, the quality of place initiatives really give the other side of the equation, what makes this a livable community, what are those wonderful things that we can do as a region to enhance what Jeffersonville is doing on its own, and then we can look for a way to make a true, sustainable plan that's going to help our communities as a whole for generations to come. That, I think, is the presentation that we had laid out for you this evening. We would be, Matt would be happy to entertain any other questions, if Councilman Samuel wants to something again, because that was great.
At least wanted to add, you know, a big thank you to the council and the city for this type of support, because without it, we couldn't do the work that we're doing. So, we tried to show a return to you, but clearly, there are a lot of communities who don't have the support in their economic development efforts, and you can see in their communities. And so, we hope that you're happy with your return.
Very happy.
I think I'd say we're very happy with the partnership that we have with you all. We thank you for all the work you've done, and looking at the numbers is just phenomenal, how much economic impact you made here in Jeffersonville.
They have a great product.
I have a question. You get like 100 bonus points if you can answer this. On your last page, it says, and I've always heard, that our area of Indiana is older, the average age is older, and of course, me being a schoolteacher and trying to work with talent retention and getting those kids to come here, how much older? Like, is it barely measurable, or is it a significant difference with me maybe to weigh up basically?
So, I, we work with, through Stats Indiana, which is managed by the IU Business Resource Center, and they will calculate it based on age categories. So, in some categories, and I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have these memorized, but in some categories of, let's say, 45 to 60, my category, that we are notably older. If you get up above 65 and so forth, not as much. But there are certain categories where we're older. Where we really are missing is that 20s, 20-something category, where, that's where your future earners, they're earning now, but they will continue to earn, and their trajectory is where, is probably the highest trajectory. That's where we're not doing as well.
Thank you. No other bonus points.
I will send it.
I mean, I'm still pretty good.
Maybe like 10? Get on some, you know.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Next up is a public hearing and a rezone.
Nathan.
And who's, is there someone here to report? Oh, okay.
Nathan, I'm sure we had to see you, because I thought for one moment I was going to say that.
You're not going to have to do that tonight. Yeah. All right, let me read this here. I only have a couple of staff reports.
First one is, do you want mine?
No, I do have this one. Yeah, 1,003 French Street. Okay. So, this is part of the, is it PC 1919? Just to confirm. Are we good? Yep, okay, perfect. So, this is part of an offering that we made to citizens of the city of Jeffersonville, property owners, to rezone their property to what we call rightsize it. And if you are aware of this area of 10th Street, it currently has many parcels that are, they have homes on them, basically. And so, what happens over time is certain quarters of our city become expanded, get more traffic, and it becomes less conducive to residential living. 10th Street is falling kind of under that condition now. So, there's a lot of traffic there, and the good news is, there's an opportunity. There's a high opportunity for commercial use. So, we actually offered, within a strategic area on 10th Street, homeowners or landowners to rezone property for commercial purposes instead of residential purposes to help facilitate that transition. So, these things can accommodate doctor's offices, small private practices. We currently see quite a few on that area, that stretch right now, there's some tax services, I believe, and some other small office uses. And so, that's basically what we are doing. This, as well as another rezoning case before you, are both people that have taken us up on that offer.
All right, and the, is it OR 23?
Yes, sir.
All right. First up, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this rezoning request for, what is it, 1,003 French Street? Anyone here to speak for or against 1,003 French Street rezone? Seeing no one, we're going to close the public hearing.
Being a member of the Plan Commission, I read this, this passed on with a favorable recommendation, and nobody was there to speak against it during that meeting. So, I'll make a motion to pass 2019 OR 23.
Second. We have a motion second to pass 2019 OR 23. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. Next up, I mentioned, Nathan, you're also doing this. We have another rezone and another public hearing.
Yes, so this is just a couple of properties down from the first one that you just took under consideration, and it's the same case. It's an offer made by the city to kind of spur this initiative.
All right, with that, again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against 2019 OR 24, a rezone for 903 and 905 East 10th Street? Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment.
This too came from the Planning Commission with a favorable recommendation, so I'll move to, since there was nobody to speak against it, so I'll make a pass 2019 OR 24.
Second. We have a motion second to pass 2019 OR 24. Anyone have any questions or concerns regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Next up is 2019 OR 25, a rezone and a public hearing, and Nathan, I guess you're up again.
Yes.
I wasn't on man this evening.
If we could scroll down to the next, I apologize, I don't have this one in front of me. Okay.
The parcel from the family to single family.
Yes, okay. So, this is, this is in Brook Hollow. This is a remnant piece of land that incorporates a roadway that was vacated and a parcel that's next to the interstate. And Alan Applegate came in to rezone this, intending one use. His buyer had another idea, so it's going back to the zoning it first was before it became rezoned to M, so it's going back to R1.
All right. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the rezone of Brook Hollow Way?
Good evening. My name is Scott Adams, represent Discovery Builders. We're the petitioner in this rezone case. Obviously, we support it. We have been contracted to build one single-family residence on the subject property, and upon our early investigations about how to proceed, we were advised by the staff that a rezone was necessary from its current designation of M1 to R1, which would allow that single-family structure to proceed forward. So, our request is for that change to R1.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this rezone? Seeing no one, we'll close public comments.
And this did come to us with a favorable recommendation. Kelly, come on, it's your last, last meeting.
I haven't had any comments either from any constituents about this issue either. It's in my district. I'll make a motion to approve 2019 OR 25.
We have a motion and a second to pass 2019 OR 25. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. Next up, another public hearing for a rezone. I guess this would be 2019 OR 26.
Yes. This is our last one tonight, and this is in relation to Bridgepoint Center, Bridgepoint Commons, I believe it is officially known as. This is the development that currently has the movie theater being built within it. It has growlers currently existing on site. What we found in the development standards that were set by the developer in their plan development was that they kind of boxed themselves in, and they got a little too restrictive on prescribing certain material usages within their buildings, and so it actually individually broke those down by material type. What we find is that rather than doing that, we're going to set a standard that says basically no more than one building material can be used for more than 60% of the building facade, but they must use three total. So, that allows a little bit greater flexibility, so that they don't have to come back before Plan Commission to get a waiver from their own rules that they set, and we're comfortable with this. So, that's the major change. If you want to look at it in detail, it's in page six of six in the staff report, and it says aesthetic character, facades, and exterior walls, and then you'll get down to the materials and colors section, and that is where that text amendment was made.
Is this, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Is this just applicable to Bridgepoint Commons, or is this adjusting our, kind of our design standards overall for the city?
Good question. It is only for the plan development that is Bridgepoint Commons.
Okay.
Yep. In fact, we don't have architectural standards throughout the rest of the city.
I didn't think so, but I wanted to make sure.
So, this is, again, something requested by the developer, and we felt comfortable. We worked on the language with them and got it to a good place. So, right there in that box. If you have any questions, let me know.
I have a question, Nathan. Does this change any of the, does this only change the design and aesthetics characteristics?
Yes.
So, does it change any type of, any part of what is allowable on the?
No use changes at all.
Okay.
No use changes, just the facade material changes.
With that, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against 2019 OR 26 regarding Bridgepoint Commons? Anyone here to speak for or against? Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close public comment.
2019 OR 26.
And this did come with a favorable recommendation.
Second. We have a motion second to pass 2019 OR 26. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? (Inaudible). We have a motion and a second to pass twenty nineteen OR twenty-six. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next up, Ron Ellis, Jeff Urban Enterprise Zone. And just so I'll let you know, Ron, there are a couple people who signed up to speak regarding this topic in the public.
Okay, well, I'll go, I'll go first and bring this up because my main is on this. And I would like to read this letter to the people of the council, to the council members and the people that are here. Since at the invitation of the executive director, I attended a special called meeting of the Jeffersonville Urban Enterprise Association on May twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. There was nine members of the association present, plus their attorney and some people from the public. The meeting was led by the vice chairman since the chairperson of the association was not present. It was brought up that the purpose of the meeting was to address the signing of a contract on the sale of property located at two twenty-eighth Spring Street by the chairperson. This contract signing was done without the authorization of association members and against the advice of the association attorney. After some discussion, there was a motion made to pass a resolution to give the executive director authority to hire an attorney to litigate the contract signing to protect the legal and equitable rights of the Jeffersonville Urban Enterprise Association. This resolution was passed unanimously. After more discussion concerning lack of opportunity to have updates of bylaws and election of officers, the discussion turned ways to replace the current chairperson. At this point, a motion was made to pass a resolution for a vote of no competence in the association chairperson to be sent to the appointing body, City Council, in hope that, say, the council could resolve what is seen as a critical situation. I am making the city council aware of this situation in hope that we can take appropriate action before more harm is done to the Jeffersonville Urban Enterprise Association. Immediately, immediately after Ms. Conlin, the clerk, sent out the agenda, I received a text message from Mr. White that said, "Is your agenda item your attempt to remove me from the urban enterprise board?" When I didn't respond, he sent another text that said, "And aren't you tired of the black-on-black attack? It's like the seventies all over again." Well, Mr. White, for me, it's not about a black-on-black attack. It's about our responsibility to do what is legal and what is right by the people of Jeffersonville.
I'd, I'd just like to add on this topic. I did get an email from Mr. White just, just before the meeting, resigning his position from UEZ Board. And with that, I don't know, Ron, is there more comments you'd like to make at this point? Or do you like public comment?
I'd like your public comment. We need to hear public comment before we go any further.
All right, since, since it's on the topic of UEZ, we're going to go ahead and ask for the three people who signed up for public comment. You have three minutes to speak. First up is Kelly Curran.
Well, I think, yeah, did you have something? She was here to, in case there's any questions on that, that letter.
Oh, okay. Peggy Hardaway?
Oh, I just want Peggy Hardaway, two-two-eight East Marpet Street, Jeffersonville, Indiana. I am a J U E A member. Pretty much everything happened according to what that letter said, and I am in agreement that we need to protect what's best for Jeffersonville.
Thank you. Next up, Ben Gillette.
Hello, counsel. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you today. I just wanted to get up and voice my distaste for the way that that all went down in the meeting. It's not appropriate behavior for councilman to go against the authority and authorization of his own counsel. And I urge that even though you have the councilman's resignation, that you still take a vote to remove him. And I ask that the council take time in deciding who will replace that gentleman and ensure that the new one is eager to write new bylaws to protect the city against that kind of behavior. There's a lot of risk, the way I understand it, in financing for the city. And I, I just believe that we need to be very careful about who's in charge of what committee going forward when you see this kind of behavior. I just wanted to take that opportunity to speak up and let you know that I've heard that from other people in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, he didn't give his name and address. I'd like to know where he's from. Ben Gillette.
I still got time.
Yeah, you do. I can use it up, too. My name's Ben Gillette, three thirty-one Locust Street.
Okay.
And is that all you need or you need that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis, is there any, anything else?
Well, yes, at this time, I would like to make the motion that we go ahead and effectively move our, remove our appointment to Jeffersonville Urban Enterprise Zone, even though he, he has submitted his letter of resignation. I think it needs to be done officially here so that we can officially appoint someone else. And also, along with one of the questions being brought out would be who would be the chairperson of that board? And I think the only way to do that is that board needs, when it meets the next time, needs to elect its own chairperson. So I have a motion, my motion.
So what I would suggest is that it would be a vote to accept the resignation rather than vote any other kind of votes. The resignation has been ten years old, which you motion to accept the resignation.
Okay, well, then I'll change my motion and accept the recommendation of our council.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and accept that letter of resignation. Any other discussion?
I didn't see the letter. Effective, when is it effective? Tonight?
Today. And I asked the, for, to be replaced, the vacancy to be replaced.
Thank you. Any other discussion? With that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resignation's been accepted. Can we act on filling that vacancy today or is it after?
I believe that you can.
Great.
Okay, Mr. President.
I'd ask that that also occur.
Okay.
Mr. President, can I? Can I before?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and nominate Ron Ellis. And I know there were some questions of it being at large. And I know according, there's been some questions according to IC five dash twenty-eight dash fifteen dash thirteen, specifically where it says, "The legislative body municipality in which the zone is located shall appoint by majority of vote the following." And it pertains to us as A, one member of the municipality's legislative body whose district includes all or part of the zone. I'm nominating Ron in good faith with the, I did read everything that our attorney Larry Wilder sent us. And also, I did reach out to Senator Ron Broom since this does involve, you know, question with state, with state legislations, state legislation. And I got a reply back to him. He, he sent an email, which I'll enter this into record, to Brian Gaud of AIM, Indiana. And it said, "The urban enterprise zone must elect the members of the Urban Enterprise Association. This is required by IC five dash twenty-eight dash thirteen A three A, which is highlighted below, which is, that's what I just read. And at-large council member would indeed represent the entire city and would therefore be able to serve as a member of the UEA. It requires approval by the majority of the council persons." And I'm going to enter this in the record. And I also like to add that it's my understanding that according to the website, that there's a council person at large in New Albany, a David Sparksdale that serves on their urban enterprise zone. They are also a Class Two city. And as I do recall, when I first met Vicki on the council, you were actually an at-large member to the UEZ. So there is a precedent set, so I would like to nominate Ron.
Councilperson Gil?
Yes.
I second your nomination.
Thank you.
Before we, we vote, has anyone, Ron, have you discussed with the UEA board members about your possible nomination? Just wondering if they care whether they're represented by a district seat or an at-large seat, if there's any preference there.
Well, we got two of the members here. Shaking her head now.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very glad to hear that, Ron. Ron? All right, next. Next up, number nineteen, an order to transfer in certain funds within the same department.
Number twenty-seven.
Twenty nineteen OR twenty-seven.
Since Heather's not here, I guess, since I did discuss this with her and I did discuss it with, this is all money that she found within her budget and is, were in need of a vehicle. So you all know we are very fond of transfers.
Not a vehicle, is it?
She didn't, she was supposed to send out an email. She was supposed to actually be here tonight and have the pitch.
So we have a motion and a second to go ahead and?
Did I hear that on the table? Was that what?
Yes.
So a motion and a second to table twenty nineteen OR twenty-seven. Any discussion? Just, just, just for point of order. I mean, it is an order to take, requires three, three readings. Okay. The vote on the floor is to table. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, number twenty, Attorney Comments, Mr. Wilder.
You know, it's a special day and we really appreciate the opportunity to serve and nothing else to talk about. There's always a duty of the lawyer to serve.
Any department heads here to speak? Any department heads here to speak? There are no other public comments outside of the UEZ comments? And with that, we have, city? Yes, yep. We already had your three minutes, Mr. White. You can come back next time. All right.
Land the hammer.
All right, first up, Mr. White.
Thank you. Mr. Wilder, I just want to apologize for interrupting on your vacation. I know how important it is as we have to continuously respond to our clients and the courts and quote unquote, in different directions to get away. So, but you know why, and I appreciate all your responses and your research and your diligence and all that.
Thanks very much, your lawyer.
And, and I, I enjoyed the, the back and forth with you as well. The only other thing I will say is the courts will decide whether or not what I did was appropriate or not. And we were under contract, and I operated under a contract, and that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Ms. Payne?
I'm sorry, can I say a little bit more?
Sure.
All right. I, I do want to say, I want to thank the mayor. I've been on the UEZ for seven and a half years. The first four years I was in Democratic appointment by the mayor. The last three years, that's the council person. I want to thank the mayor for his appointment to the board, thank the council for appointing me to the board. We've done a great deal of projects over the past seven and a half years. We've done a lot of events and supported a lot of businesses and have been an asset to the community and to those who find Jeffersonville as a destination. And it will be nice to take a break after seven and a half years. And it's, I think it's appropriate to remove myself so we can take personalities out of the issues that are at hand and things can be settled accordingly. And if all goes well, I would be asked for reconsideration next year. Thank you.
Ms. Payne?
Yeah, I guess I'll say something tonight. So, yeah, three and a half years ago, I was actually sitting in, in Scotty's seat because we had a different president and the way that our, our seats were. And was, remember getting my first council packet and feeling a bit overwhelmed, like how many documents do we have to sign in one meeting? But, but also overwhelmed looking at, you know, what our agenda was and the obligation that I felt at that time to really represent the people that elected me. And even though I am in the chair next to that chair now, that is something that's continued to, to weigh on me and, you know, do my best to represent the people that elected me and also the people in, in Jeffersonville as a whole. Over the past three and a half years, I've really fought hard to be someone that fights to keep government as far out of our business as possible and protect property owners and business owners and residents. And that has meant voting by myself quite a few times, and that's okay. I've also been someone that's really tried to mediate and negotiate and move things forward when sometimes it felt like we were stuck or at an impasse. And I'm proud to have been able to do that on a few occasions. And as someone that, most importantly, has tried to be as responsible as possible with taxpayer dollars and really make sure that what the purpose of our roles here and the city as a whole matches that. And there's been so many projects along the way. The city, I always say the city makes us look good because of all the amazing things that are happening here. Some of it by chance that we had nothing to do with and maybe some, some of it we might have had an impact in, in happening. And I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to have been able to serve and also with each and every one of you, I have the utmost of respect. And anytime we were in disagreement, which sometimes we're in agreement, but most of the time we have different opinions on things, it has always been with a level of, of respect that I admire. I don't know who's going to sit in this chair after me. I, I believe within the next forty-eight hours, we will know who my replacement will be. But whoever that person is, I will do everything that I can to help that person transition and to continue to be the best voice possible for the third district. And hopefully, and I'm, I'm sure they will, be a valued addition to the team. So I, I really appreciate, again, the, being able to serve, but most importantly, I appreciate the people that voted for me, and I hope that I have made them proud. I know there's a few District Three residents in the, in the audience. And I'm excited to see what Jeffersonville will be doing next, just from the sidelines. But probably not too far away because I know me and I know that there's too many great things happening in Jeffersonville for me to not, to not pay attention and be involved. So thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
President, can I, can I get thirty seconds?
Again?
Well, this is the last time. You're pushing it. Thirty seconds.
I got a little distracted and I forgot to say to Kelly, I have very much enjoyed working with you. And we come from diametrically opposed positions philosophically, but we have been able to work together over the past three and a half years to reach a compromise to get some things done. And I've always enjoyed working with you and your insight and the information you provide. And you're going to be missed, so.
Thank you.
Mary?
Echo Councilman White's comments and all the best of luck. And the matter, this seat configuration has changed numerous times over this council.
Yeah.
But you've always been to the right of the line, what? So it's going to be a little odd you not be in here, but best of luck in life.
Ms. Gil?
Kelly, it's been a pleasure serving with you and being another female on the, I take pride in.
You carry the torch, Lisa.
Well, sometimes, you know, it's not easy sitting on these seats, and you well know that. And I'm really glad that you were offered to whoever sits in that seat because you know your district and, you know, we all have our own personalities, but when it comes down to, it's our connection to our constituents and their needs and especially of the, your district. I'm sure you will be very vocal and I'm sure your constituents will appreciate that. But I value working alongside another strong female at least a lot, and I wish you all the best. You're leaving us for a happy thing. You got married and former councilperson Zach Payne is here to cheer you on in your last. But I know you got a lot of new things coming down the horizon, and I wish you luck in all your endeavors.
Thank you.
And then also wanted to grab, Nathan, you brought up about the homeless and I brought up that, I've been working with Keely, single. She is actually the director of the homeless. She is actually the director of the Homeless Coalition. And she did contact me that they complained, phone tagged with Assistant Cheaton McFoy, but they're going to be meeting this month, and so let the council know that if you have any input for them. But they're going to address especially a Jeffersonville Police Department because they are the ones that get those calls for the homeless camps or any kind of issues. And I told her she needs to be present and she needs to, they need to work out some sort of response, some, you know, because sometimes you need to get in delicate situations because they're all there, homeless, for different reasons, and her expertise will be valued. And so they are going to be getting together and put some sort of a plan together. And I think once that happens, I'll invite Keely to come and let us know what they decide to do. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Well, a few things. Ron, congratulations on your appointment. And there's a couple members here. It's my understanding that they have formed a committee in the UEZ to look at updating their bylaws. If you could keep me apprised of that, like I expressed in the meeting where the vote did not go through to accept the credit going to the UEZ, I would love to know what the changes are and if you kept the process of that, so if you could let me know, that'd be great. Kelly, three years went by really quickly. I've always appreciated you. I've always been your biggest fan. You've done a great job on the council. I'm very sad now that now I will lose track of all the holidays. I do not know what I will do without you informing us every week.
Father's Day before the next one.
But no, in all seriousness, you, you have left your mark on the council unless in a term, and not everyone can say that. You should be very proud of what you've accomplished, truly meaningful. And then lastly, being the history teacher that I am, in three days, we'll be celebrating the 75th anniversary of D-Day. And my grandfather was a World War II veteran. My old Bob was at D-Day, as many of your family members, I'm sure, as well. And he was a tank driver, amphibious tank driver, on day two of D-Day. That's one of the most, what you learn, the more you learn about it, the more Herculean the effort. I hope that we, as a society, learn the lessons from them and could repeat something on such a scale if it were ever called upon us. But I always like to give shout-outs to that greatest generation whenever I possibly can. So do something for World War II. But I think Kentucky is having one of the largest celebrations. I don't know the exact details of World War II vets on Thursday, but I certainly, that's where my heart and mind will be, and I hope other people will as well. That's it.
Mr. Ellis?
I echo so many things that are already said about Ms. Payne, Mrs. Payne. Congratulations on, on time well spent serving your community. We, most of the time, voted in like sign, but anytime that we didn't, I knew that it was, I knew why, and I knew what principles you were standing behind because you, as much as anybody here have stood behind, consistently stood behind your principles and what you believe in your representation. I just realized a few minutes ago that after this council meeting, I will once again be the youngest person here.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess maybe, maybe. But, but congratulations on time well spent, and best of luck moving forward, and let us know how we can be helpful.
Mr. Ellis?
Kelly, my first remarks is going to be to you. I think it's wonderful that you have been on this journey. It's a wonderful journey. It was wonderful being able to serve with you. It's been, we're at opposite ends of the spectrum. You were the youngest person here, and I'm the oldest. But it's, it shows that we can learn from each other. You're never too old, or you're never too young to learn. And I would like, also like to go on to say, my position on the UEZ Board was one that I would have taken against anyone sitting here if the situation hadn't occurred. And if I ever am in a situation like that, I hope you would do the same to me. And I mean, there are times, if you're in the wrong place, maybe at the wrong time, or you've signed the wrong papers at the wrong time, then somebody needs to stand up and say, hey, that's not right, and we've got to do something about it. And that's exactly what I felt that I had to do at this point. I will do the best, to the best of my ability, to represent the council proudly on the Jeffersonville Urban Enterprise Association and do my best to keep you informed of all this happening and that goes, and that also includes the financial situation. I think there should be transparency on all organizations that have to do with the City Council. One of the organizations that I, I say right now that there's a lack of transparency in is the Board that's got, you and Matt serve on the redevelopment Board, and I think there could be more transparency coming from that Board, especially when we look at the financials. But I will continue to do what I do, and I also, you've seen me a number of times vote against additional appropriations. And my reason for voting against additional appropriations is I wonder why we spend all of that time in budget negotiations and working on and getting a budget together, and then we turn around and within the first week of the year, we're already doing additional appropriations. I think some of those additional appropriations could have been done without. There have been some additional appropriations that I have favored, but as a whole, I will continue to stand up and represent the taxpayer when it comes to spending their money. You know, what we do here has an impact on all of the people in our city, not just those that are well-to-do, but also the poor and even the homeless. And I'll continue to fight and be a representative of the people. Thank you.
Mr. Samuel?
I echo Kelly's other comments. I wish you Godspeed. Appreciate your input on here. I value that. I wish we would have been able to have the homeless ordinance planned for funding so you could at least voted on part of it. Whichever.
I'll probably be here to speak, you know.
Okay.
Not that my opinion matters, but.
Then I was going to make a comment about the transfer to not you shelter, not you shelter, animal shelter. Sorry about that. I just appreciate our departments for at least trying to find their own money. I understand we need to maybe ask questions or, or have them be here to at least say what they want to do and answer those questions. But so many times we've had departments that come, and they don't try to find money in their own budget, they just want the additional. And I do, did want to say thank you to those, to the animal shelter. And then last comment, we have a coworker here with me tonight, Dan Holder, works with a lot of teenagers, young, young kids, a child play, does a fantastic job. Appreciate Dan being in the audience and being a citizen of Jefferson.
I just want to echo the comments, Kelly. Thank you for serving your community at such a young age. It's, it's impressive that a young person like you got involved and, and worked hard, got elected, and served the community. So, thank you, thank you for all that, and best of luck in your endeavors in the future. With that, all I have.